Let's get it started. Okay. The July 7, 2025 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. Mr. Volkey will now lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before the invocation, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember three individuals who have passed within the last, since our last council meeting, all of them North County folks, and it's been particularly rough time in North County. So I want to recognize Kira Fake, who she drowned tragically. She was from Severna Park. There was Julian Telator, who died in a fire in Glen Burnie, saving some family members. And then Ron Dillon Sr. just passed away this week, who's the father of a former member of this body, Ron Dillon Jr. So if you all just join me for a moment, please, in silent remembrance of these folks. Thank you. Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith, as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Heavenly Father, we gather here today in the spirit of unity and purpose, seeking your guidance as we embark on the important work before us. We thank you for the privilege of serving our community and the opportunity to make the decisions that impact the lives of many. Lord, grant us wisdom to discern what's right and just. Help us to listen to one another with open hearts and minds, fostering an atmosphere of respect and collaboration. May our discussions be filled with integrity and our actions reflect your love and compassion. As we deliberate on the issues at hand, remind us that our responsibility is to serve the common good and to uphold the values that strengthen our community. May we be instruments of your peace and advocates for those who cannot speak for themselves. We ask your blessing on this body, and may our efforts today be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Okay. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received three pieces which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit, as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. And I will say again, this is for speaking on items that are not on the printed agenda. Jigna Patel, Trudy McFall, Kyle Nimhard, Michael Potts, and Elle Bassett. Ms. Patel, you can go ahead.
Oh, hi. My name is Jigna Patel. I have a quick question. I was trying to sign up to talk about tiny housing, like, later, but it wasn't an option. So is that time now, or will there be time later?
There will not be time. The public hearing on that has closed, so there will not be a time to speak on that later.
If I have anything to say, I'm just going to say it in these two minutes. I'm going to talk about workforce housing, and I'm going to talk about tiny housing, and I'm going to incorporate together. Because for the last seven months, we've been coming here, and we've talked about how problematic workforce housing is, particularly for the development of Nixon property, all the, we, I mean, ad nauseam, we've talked about it, the traffic concerns, environmental concerns. And so now is the time for action. But I was reading the tiny house bill, and guess what? It has the same problems. No density limits, no road access restrictions, no environmental, like, concerns acknowledged. Tiny housing is going to end up just like workforce housing is, where it's going to, in theory, it sounds great, but in reality, in the way the bill is written, very problematic. So just to back to workforce housing, though, because I saw tiny housing, I got distracted, and I said, oh, my God, this is like what my community is going through with workforce housing. But now is the time to act. Like, we have talked about everything repeatedly for seven months. We're not going anywhere. We're going to keep coming. We're going to keep advocating for our neighborhood. And it's time for this council to do something for its constituents. We're telling you, we have a problem, and you guys need to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. I don't see Ms. McFall here. Mr. Nimhard.
Tough act to follow. Kyle Nemhard, 7809 Maple Run Court. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the county council. I hope you all had a happy and safe Fourth of July weekend with friends and family. I'm here also to express my concern regarding the plan, sketch plan for the Nixon property by Bluestone Developers LLC. Two minutes is hardly enough time to discuss all the technical flaws associated with the plan. I did take the time to reach out to you all individually, to meet with you at a time of your individual convenience, to visit the neighborhood, just to contextualize the unique concern that our neighborhoods have about this proposed development. And we're only requesting 15 to 30 minutes of your time, tops. That's it, just to walk and see the area, and I think just your brief trip, just to access the site, you'll notice that you'll have to navigate a maze of access roads, not major thoroughfares, access roads connected by cul-de-sacs and driveways. And you'll see just how much of a challenge it is to get to that site, and then trying to force 700-plus vehicles potentially into that new development. Again, I want to also stress how the Workforce Housing Act is being blatantly exploited by the developer. This property is only accessible by single occupancy vehicles, which are subject to varying costs. As you're all familiar with the cost of owning a vehicle, and so what transportation options do the intended market for this housing have? There are none. It's just single occupancy vehicle, and it defeats the purpose of workforce housing. So the only, the only response a developer can offer when we provide these technical concerns is citing sections of the county code. To me, that demonstrates that the, that demonstrates that the developer does not have confidence in their plan and cannot defend the plan on its own merits. So again, I just want to stress the importance of prudent amendments to the Workforce Housing Act, which I think is a good bill, but we just need to refine it, so it can't be taken advantage of. And just consider this, that Anarundel County government will be left to explain the decisions behind this irresponsible development by the developer, long after the developer has come through and collected his profits. So again, I want to thank you for your time, and I look forward to meeting with you all in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nimhard. Mr. Potts.
My name's Michael Potts. I'm 5907 Rockhold Drive, Deal, Maryland. You hear about Discovery Village? I don't know all the leasing stuff and everything like that, but I know for two, two and a half years, I've been using the ramp, like, two, three times a week. I know that there's always other trailers there, people use it, and just out of nowhere, with no notice, it closed in July. There's no water access anywhere else in the area to get into the West River or the Rhodes River or anything like that, other than if you've got to pay $25 every time you use it. Just trying to see if we could get Discovery Village back open, or if we can get some public boat ramps places, because there's none in the area. The only other, I think the only other two Anarundel County managed boat ramps I know are in Glen Burnie and Pasadena, which is an hour difference from where it is, in different waterways. Yeah. After all the commotion on Facebook, I thought I'd be one of few, one of many that was here, not the only one.
There still may be others. We haven't called everybody up yet.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. Ms. Bassett.
Yes, my name is Ellie Bassett. I'm your Southwest River Keeper. You're not the only one. I'm with the Rundle Rivers Federation, where we work to heal and protect our local waterways here in opposition to closing the Discovery Village boat ramp. You know, the adopted Plan 2040 identifies the overarching theme of maintaining character, and that includes expanding and enhancing public access. You have taken away the only public access in the southwest and road waterway. And I understand that budget is tight, times are hard, but if there is a way to renegotiate this lease, if there is a way to take the money that was going to that lease and putting it into another boat ramp on the southwestern road, we should be taking steps towards equitable access. This very much feels like a step in the wrong direction. So I appreciate your time tonight in hearing these comments, and I really hope you sincerely renegotiate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. So. All right. All right. Sir, you can go ahead.
Okay. Phil Otetto, Poplar Avenue, here in Annapolis. So, hold on. Hopefully, you've heard about the dramatic uptick in ICE arrests, and hopefully, you also know that these raids are happening right here in Anarundel County. I'm here tonight to make sure you know what the Anarundel County Police policies are around ICE raids, so you're fully aware and can ask for clarification from our law enforcement agencies. A few weeks back, I asked Anarundel Police and Sheriff's Department, how can our community expect our local police to respond if they are called for masked, armed, unidentified individuals arresting, aka kidnapping, people in our communities or local businesses without warrants? Will the police help the armed kidnappers, stop them, keep them, the non-targeted community safe from them? What else can we inspect? I asked the same question again, but what if the armed people were identified in some way? These are reasonable questions, so we know how we can expect our local law enforcement to respond, and we can plan accordingly in our communities to keep ourselves safe. I still haven't heard from the Sheriff's Department, despite following up several times by phone and email. I think the residents of Anarundel County deserve a response and would appreciate if you were compelled to release some sort of public statement on their policies. Eventually, I did get a response from the Police Department, although not a full response. Their policy states that "The department is committed to cooperating with federal immigration authorities as requested and/or in response to local matters," and that "When ICE agents are conducting operations in the county, aka serving an arrest warrant, they have agreed to notify police communications at the location and expect the number of agents in the operation for awareness purposes only." Always here, it said, "The police are here to keep the community safe," so their policy begs the question, how are the local police and deputies going to keep us safe when ICE is overly aggressive towards bystanders during these arrests, as we've seen them be? We recently saw local police in Mount Rainier respond in just about the best way possible during an ICE raid, with significant public presence, and encourage you to reach out to them. We want to make sure you're aware about this, so when communities inevitably push back on these raids, you'll already be informed on that. So the main question is, how will law enforcement prioritize its citizens' First and Fourth Amendment rights over ICE agents, who have been acting frequently enough outside the law?
Thank you, Mr. Otetto.
Look forward to their response.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Robert Smith, 1487 Chatham Court, Crofton, Maryland. I'm here with Mr. Otetto to also ask the same question. We've reached out to law enforcement. I know the events that happened in Paramount, California, and LA that erupted has been close to four weeks, but there are important questions to ask about the safety of our community, especially when we are seeing federal overreach by our federal government. I'm going to be really blunt and roll up front, and I just want to add and hope to ask right up front, both as you as the county council, or reach out to the Anarundel County Police Department, also as well as the county executive, hopefully, who's listening to this. If ICE comes into our community, and there's people, innocent bystanders, that are stuck in that, what, we want to know publicly, so we can protect our community, on basically, we need to know from the Anarundel County Police Department, are they going to prioritize the public health or the personal health, physical safety of our Anarundel County citizens, their civil rights, over that of the federal ICE agents? The context of that is, when I was watching a live stream back four weeks ago, when the things happened outside of Paramount, they interviewed an individual who was literally sitting in traffic, did not know that was going to come that day. Girl behind him, without provocation, ICE agents fire off tear gas, hit a 13-year-old girl behind him, forced her out of the car, she's laying on the ground, choking to death because she can't breathe, because people think, these are people that are just literally stuck in traffic because they were doing a raid. And then he talks about him and his girlfriend, his girlfriend pulled out her phone, just because this is the world we live in nowadays, people want to record what's going on. He hears an ICE agent say, "Get her, she's got a phone," despite the fact that he's an American citizen, she's American, she was an American citizen. They grab her out, she's gone for days. So what we're talking about is, we're not just talking about protesters showing up, we're talking about innocent bystanders, and we need to know our county police are going to put the rights of our Anarundel County citizens prioritaries that over federal agents when they do overreach.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Minahan.
Madam Chair, council members, good evening. Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland. Been paying attention to this Discovery Village issue. Bill and I were both on the Region 9 SAC. We talked about this issue quite substantially. And my conclusion is, the county has no business being in the boat ramp business. We have three boat ramps spread across, what, 500 miles of shoreline here? We have 145 commercial marinas in this county, all of whom have boat ramps. And it makes sense for the county, I think, to create a public-private partnership with 10, 15, 20, 30, 50, and pay them a couple thousand dollars to allow citizens to come and use the boat ramp. You wouldn't be constrained to three. You'd get out of the boat ramp business, building and maintaining boat ramps, and leave it with the people who have the comparative advantage to do it. So I'm appealing to the council, I'm appealing to the county executive, to consider a temporary fix now for Discovery Village, but create the framework now so that you can support these marinas, provide 20 times more boat ramps around the county, make the water access much more accessible, and a public-private partnership, I think, is the right answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
What do we?
There you go. You're on.
My name is Bill Sherbo. I'm at 1252 West River Road, Shadyside, Maryland. Thanks for giving me a couple minutes here. I'm the first couple storm clouds that are blowing this way over something that's going to get big in a hurry in Shadyside. I'm also the president of the Anarundel County Watermen's Association, and I've been taking a lot of calls about this. We know we have that boat ramp in Shadyside at Discovery Village. We've, we're here, and it was in the news why we have it years ago. That's why we have it. It was, it's important. We needed it. And I'm going to be a little contrary to my fellow here, in that I think that you guys rushed to judgment on taking a vote a while back. Somebody may have looked at the rental agreement and said, "This is, this is terrible." And probably, none of you here were a part of what took place when Steve Schu was the county executive. But looking at it now, I mean, and you probably, a lot of you hopefully came upon this cold when it came to you guys back at the amendment session. In some respects, it's sort of like looking at your rental agreement after you've signed it and have paid a lot of money, $1.6 million, I think, is a starting figure, and then realizing, I mean, I don't like this. I'm moving out of my house because I don't like my rental agreement, and you're moving out before you have a place to live. Okay? So I think you, this needs to be addressed, readdressed. It's not going to go away. The county executive has had been approached before it changed hands for you guys to purchase this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherbo. Yes, sir.
My name's Justin Mullin, 5 Farragut Road, Annapolis. I'm actually here as a, someone with knowledge of the lease at Discovery Village. Hyatt Commercial does the property management and has worked with the ownership there since they acquired it two and a half years ago. I was also here for the amendment hearing, when it was initially shot down, and then I did not know that the next morning it would be brought back up again. But in the testimony that was provided for the original amendment, I don't think the whole story was told. Everyone continued, or continually referred to it as a boat ramp. If you went to Anarundel County's Parks and Recs website, it was Discovery Village Park. The county leased all seven acres of that park, from edge to edge, waterfront to waterfront. And the county, I also think, believes that they had a bad deal. That is, could not be further from the truth. To lease seven acres of waterfront for the value that they were leasing it is more than fair. As in all ground leases, which is essentially what they had, the tenant is responsible for all maintenance and upkeep of the property. And I know that some of the issues that came up down there were because the county was required to maintain the bulkhead. For those that are familiar with it, the bulkhead had fallen into the river. Right? That is unacceptable for a county park. As soon as the ownership purchased the property, they approached Parks and Recs and said, "We know that you're not fully utilizing this. Let's work together. Let's be partners on this. Tell us if you, should we tear down the building, turn it into something else? Should we put a pavilion there? Give us ideas. Come to us." Over and over, we offered opportunities to delay the cost of some of the capital improvements, to spread them over time, and what we got in return was, in the dark of night, somebody terminated the lease, so that they thought they could get out of paying the cost of maintaining the property. I want the public and I want the county council to understand that that was the situation, not what was presented here in the initial meeting for the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Jared Kachewski. I'm in Pasadena on White Star Crossing, and I'm actually here for a slightly different topic, but one that I'm noticing some trends with. I'm here to advocate for the Jumper's Hole, the Jumper's Hole Road project, that is supposed to be putting in a multi-use path that would give access for effectively three communities to be able to get over to the BNA Trail and our local elementary school. The project's been slow-rolled and intentionally delayed, and not everybody who is affected by it has actually gotten notice of it. Just like this boat ramp that was closed down, the council doesn't seem to be looking at the bigger picture. They see an opportunity to delay things or save a couple of dollars without realizing everybody that it's going to be impacting. Right now, you have a number of people advocating for a boat launch, something that I'm definitely in favor of having, but I also want to be able to bike safely into and out of my community. Make sure, when you're looking at things, that you're looking at the bigger picture, not just saving a quick buck, not just saying, "There's not enough interest in this." Make sure you're contacting everybody involved, not just the homeowners and landlords, but reach out to the greater community and make sure that you see the bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. David Goodwin, 235 Westwood Road, Annapolis, Maryland. Speaking about the Discovery Village boat ramp as well, having worked with the property management and leasing team and the ownership group over the last two and a half years, and then coming to the hearing on July 10, I believe, or June 10, hearing the consideration you guys gave the lease, the statistics that you gave it of 100 boats per year, just doesn't seem like it was properly taken, based on our count from last Saturday from a local resident/tenant down there. There were 63 boats that used the ramp last Saturday alone. So going back to how this started, it's good to hear the public out here today. It felt like the termination of the lease came in a period of the budget process that wasn't open to public comments, so the public didn't get a chance to voice their opinion. I think it's important that now they get a chance to. It's good that the county worked with us to repair a portion of the bulkhead in 2024. It was about 300 lineal feet of bulkhead that we replaced, and that gave the property the ability to have more access and have more use for boats. And we worked with the county from that point forward to say, well, you know, make the rest of these repairs over a period of time, to be within your budget, to not be a constraint in one year or two years, but, you know, I think we gave them three years after the initial repair, which was all done through a service agreement with the county. So to be working with them for two and a half years, then within a week have the lease terminated with no explanation and statistics that didn't add up, was a tough pill to digest. So we're hoping, you know, to find a resolution in the future, and it's good that, at least now, the public is out here talking about it and being informed and informing the group here about, about the use down there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? So moved. Allison Pickard. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the legislative session of June 16, 2025.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:06 PM. It was opened with an invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative session of June 16, 2025? So moved. Allison Pickard. Rodvian, second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the legislative session of June 16, 2025 stand, approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6525, Inordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Homeowners' Property Tax Credit Program, Total Real Property Tax. Bill Number 6625, Inordinance Concerning Zoning Eating Disorder Treatment Facility.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1725, Resolution Providing Host Jurisdiction Approval of the Issuance of Private Activity Bonds for Financing of the Village at Providence Point. Resolution Number 1825, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Cost of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program. Resolution Number 1925, Resolution Confirming Appointments to the Board of Trustees for the Anarundel County Retiree Health Benefits Trust. And Resolution Number 2025, Resolution Continuing the Service of Brenda Cottrelli as Acting County Auditor.
And we will vote on Resolution Number 2025 at the end of our meeting this evening. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5525.
Bill Number 5525, Inordinance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundel County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
All right. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table. I have Billy Penley, our controller, and David Gregory from McKenna, Shelton &amp; Hen, our bond counsel. Bill 5525 is the annual bond ordinance concerning the issuance, sale, and delivery of the county's general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes, or bands. Bands are issued in the form of a line of credit, which are short-term loans, and this program continues to be authorized by the Maryland General Assembly. Purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the issuance of bond anticipation notes in the amount to be outstanding at any time not in excess of $800 million, and bonds in an amount not exceeding $1,611,208,326, in order to finance in whole or in part the construction of capital projects set forth in the capital budget of the county for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, or in such capital budgets for prior fiscal years. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of refunding bonds to refund some or all of the outstanding bond issues, not to exceed 120% of the aggregate principal amount of the outstanding bonds. And we do have one amendment that will introduce at the appropriate time to decrease the amount of the authority to reflect changes to conform it to the FY 2026 approved capital budget. We're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5525. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5525? All right. Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 5525 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5525.
Bill Number 5525, Inordinance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundel County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Okay. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment decreases the amount of bond authority and corrects certain amounts in the bill to conform to the final capital budget.
Okay. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this decreases the amount of bond authority to $1,607,401,122, which is a decrease of $3,807,204, and corrects certain amounts in the bill to conform it to the FY 2026 approved capital budget.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt. Second? Okay. Any discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
All right. So Bill Number 5525, as amended, will be heard again on July 21st, 2025. So thank you all for coming. It's kind of had lots to do and say for that one. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4825.
Bill Number 4825, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision Development, Zoning Tiny Home Community Development.
All right. Mr. Smith? This is your bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, over the last couple of weeks, our team, as well as, I don't know if Ms. Rodvian was on that VTC, if you had any other questions, but we met with the PNZ team, as well as the administration team, and spoke about this particular bill and the intent and purpose behind it. Ms. Miller did come back with a, some proposed language in the bill, and the goal that I've always said, when it came to this legislation, was to drive the conversation about tiny homes and us being articulate and specific about motivating developers, indoor communities, to host these as a particular solution to solve the affordability crisis. And so while we're getting to the end of the line for the expiration of the bill, we'll still have this dialogue. She did make some recommendations in a letter that came back to me, so I want to make sure you all were aware of that. We will ultimately wind up trying to redo the bill and have it come back in another form. Did that, communicate that to them, or at least to Ethan earlier today. The goal was to still have this conversation publicly, so folks know where we are when it comes to tiny homes specifically. There was a question that I did have for the staff, but I'll let them respond if they want to say some remarks before I get into the question and answer, period. Madam Chair.
Yes. You want to go ahead and ask?
All right.
Please.
We're happy to answer any questions and have a discussion.
All right. And so one of the, so one of the questions that came up was, when we were focused on the H, the previous housing acts, we, as the council, focused on the underlying zoning district and not increasing density. And I think that was one of the questions that was, relates to me in the email. What I wanted to ask was, when it comes to development cost perspective, and this may be to miss land, is there, you mentioned that the affordability may be an issue for developers for R1, R2, R5. Can you sort of dive into that, or at least give a short thoughts on? I think you mentioned that tiny will be feasible from a development cost perspective using the, it won't be feasible using the density allowance for R1, R2, R5. I don't know if you have that email present?
Hi, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Sure, we can speak to that, Mr. Smith. The bill as introduced doesn't impose any specific density allowances for these new tiny home developments. I think somebody earlier actually made that comment, but because it's silent on density, the density in the underlying zoning district would prevail. So there are, there would actually be density limits. Our concern was that, particularly in some of the lower residential zones, where you had proposed these, like R1 and R2, I think your bill said that, or suggested that one of these developments would have at least five units, and you were talking about a building envelope of maybe 2,500 square feet. So in those zoning districts, because the density limitations are low, in other words, in R1, you need 40,000 square feet to subdivide a lot. In R2, 15,000 or 20,000 square feet. To have even a small tiny home development of five lots, you would need a very large amount of acreage. So we think there's kind of a disconnect there between what would be, you know, the limitations that the code would impose and the feasibility of actually doing that type of development.
Does the minimum, so when we reference the word, a minimum of five, and considering that each lot would be 2,500 square feet, would that allow them to build more than five on a, on a, on a one-acre lot?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Based on everything else other than the density limitations, the way you wrote, you introduced the bill, it would allow more than five, but we're saying because of the density limitations that are on the, in the code now, because those limitations aren't overridden by the proposed legislation, they would still apply.
Got it, got it. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I'll answer the question on, you had mentioned that the council specifically did not want increased allowable densities other than the MPDU bonus. I think the only reason I was focused on, or I didn't focus on, the MPDU is why we were fans of that, is because it was creating affordable housing, affordable options, I should say. So that's why we were like, hey, go over, if, if, if you can go over the density level as long as it meets, met those MPDU standards, where they would give us more units out of that, where in this case, all the tiny homes are affordable, or they should be, certainly if we're looking at the building standards in, of today. And so the question, I guess, is, well, I guess I was answering your question, the reason I didn't think we needed to have MPDU's was because MPDU's were designed to create affordable units. Tiny homes are affordable. And so that's why I didn't necessarily think MPDU's were necessary, because they're all affordable. They're all, should be less than 200K to purchase, just based off of sort of the regional selling of these in the area. Was that an acceptable, I guess, stance to have, I guess, from my standpoint?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. What I'll do is, I do have, over the next couple of weeks, I'd love to sit down with the administration again, virtual, if that's possible. Got some other amendments that I want to sort of walk through. I know this bill won't carry all that water, but the goal is to continue to have this conversation about tiny homes and their place in Anarundale County's future. And the reason I'm so adamant about it and focusing on it is because I think this is that first step when it comes to housing solutions that could help a lot more folks who are either young folks, older folks, and even some recovery community folks. I had a conversation about that recently, potentially being a solution for some of the communities that, where housing is a crisis for them, and the affordability of it specifically. And so the goal with this is always, always, always to create more affordable options. So that's why, that's why I wanted to have this conversation over the summer. So we started up, so that it wouldn't get dragged on into next year, and hopefully, as this thing evolves, we can have language that fits, aligns better with the administration's vision on this bill. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hunt, do y'all have any?
Oh, I was just going to say that the administration, as a, as a general concept, we are supportive of tiny homes and, you know, increased flexibility in dwelling types, and so we look forward to those discussions and finding a way to make this work.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All right. We will not hold a public hearing on this bill this evening, as the public hearing has closed, and the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 4825 was deferred to tonight. Mr. Smith?
So I'm going to go ahead, I was going to defer, but since we're going to have the meeting, the public meeting, to come back with the finalized bill, I'll just go ahead and withdraw the bill so that we can have that conversation. I do have a bill that's already being crafted with this updated language, and the goal is to have that introduced, certainly at the next meeting, so that we can further move this, this needle or this ball along.
Okay. All right. So bill withdrawn?
Oh.
There you go.
Realize I have a twin.
We got a little echo going on. So, all right.
I've never heard myself in the council chamber before. That's a first.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5025, as amended.
Bill Number 5025, Inordinance Concerning Zoning BRAC Mixed-Use Development.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill?
Well, I think there's any other additional changes to the bill, I'm aware of, efforts that occurred at various points in time over the last 10 years, and to rectify a situation where a specific set of properties were removed from being able to have access to some of these capabilities. And so this goal was to remediate that, and that's, that's, that was the genesis of this. Other than that, I don't have any other thing to add to this particular bill.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've, with me at the table, sorry, Ethan Hunt on behalf of the administration, Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, and Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. We're comfortable with this bill, and we're happy to answer any questions the council has.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this bill? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. So just a quick question, make sure I understand this. So this is expanding the BRAC mixed-use area over to the buildings that are by the airport that are, the annex, fanex, is that what you call it over there?
Fanex is over there. It is over there. In the original version of this bill, those, there were clusters of properties that were included in the mixed-use bill, and, or the overlay, I should say. And then, I think in '21, '22, it was, '21, it was modified again by my predecessor, and I think at that point, you used a overlay circle that somehow excluded those additional properties that were BRAC-focused, because the land that is near the airport, where Fort Meade and some of its clients use on a regular basis, were then excluded from that, from that overlay. The whole goal was the BRAC mixed-use overlay, and so that portion, that NSA is a tenant, and US Cyber Command is a tenant, all those folks, they were considered still part of BRAC, but the properties themselves were removed during the last revision of this bill. And so this intent is to capture those properties while still maintaining the current overlay over, over Fort Meade in that sort of warehouse.
Okay. So I guess the concern that I have with this is, even if I don't like exactly where this line is, there's this sort of big circle that goes around Fort Meade. You can say, okay, I understand the rationale for that, because Fort Meade's in the middle, and you've got this big circle, and we're kind of saying everything around there probably relates in some way to Fort Meade, it's part of the lifeblood of that community. Then you start expanding this up to the airport, and you add that in. Is there a limit to where this could go? Like, is there, could you say, we're going to go down to another part of the county that has something to do with BRAC, and so now we're going to expand that more? Like, what does that look like? I guess that's my question.
I don't think there's any intent to expand. It was to. Properties, properties that were excluded when it was revisited in 2021, so just recapturing those properties that were already in there previously. But I certainly don't have any intent to expand this, and not that I'm aware of any other organizations within the defense industries that is interested in that.
Okay.
I think their intent was to focus on the ones that were removed when they redid the overlay.
Okay. I guess it just keeps changing, is all I'm hearing. Like, there was the original when you were here.
Yes.
Then your successor, the first successor, who's now your predecessor, came in and sort of changed this and did something different.
Yeah.
Now you, as the successor, are coming in, and you're saying, well, I'm going to change it to get something that I had, you know, two times ago. So the concern I have is just with the constant sort of ability to add new properties in, what's the, what's the nexus, or what's the limitation that says, we're not going to go down, and I'm not saying this to freak anybody out, but I got to pick somewhere in the county, right?
Yeah.
Say Crofton, or say Laurel, or something like, Laurel, I think, is probably included in here, but, you know, other parts of the county that you could say, this is a quote-unquote BRAC-focused area. What limits this from just kind of becoming this tool where we say, this part of the county is BRAC-focused?
I mean, I think, I think history does. BRAC happened in 2010-ish timeframe, and so the output of that, what led, is what led to that upcoming legislation that happened a few years later. The go, if, if there are other properties in the future that try to use that as a, as a, an anchor to leverage that legislation, to expand it, I would say that's not the case, because BRAC has already happened. I don't, I don't foresee BRAC happening again on Fort Meade that I'm aware of. There is no, when you look at the tri, I think it's a triannual review, TBR, or something like that, for DOD, I don't see Fort Meade as being, or Maryland, quite frankly, especially with the current president, I don't see any, any federal institutions being put in Maryland to, to malfeasance, actually, I can assure you. In fact, they're taking things away.
I was going to say, FBI just.
They just took it away. And so this, I think in '21, '22, and you can certainly ask my predecessor, I think they were just trying to simplify this process, and maybe, where's this, one of the, I think he's in there somewhere, I don't think that the, I think they, there was, it was a miscalculation on when they did the overlay, and was just thinking Fort Meade, and just put the sort of radius around it, and assumed that that was BRAC. I don't recall anyone sort of asking, sort of me in the past, or the previous folks that motivated this bill back in 2013, 14, when those discussions were had. The goal has always been to facilitate BRAC transition. Fort Meade is kind of still growing a little bit. It's not, it's not completely stale, and as you know, the federal government takes forever to make things happen. Hell, 175 is still being worked on, as far as a construction standpoint, which drives me nuts. So I don't foresee in the future, another legislator here on this council using BRAC as a way to expand that. This is just capturing the ones that were already tagged that and bringing it back. So, and maybe, I don't know if Ms. Hummer have anything on that, because she has certainly thoughts on Fort Meade, because she represents the other portion of it as well, so, you know, if she wants to weigh in, it's totally up to her.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
All right, I'm almost done, I promise. So my last question is this, these properties that are added back in, that you said were in there before, in the previous iteration, then your successor slash predecessor, just get a kick out of that. But anyway, that, that situation took these out, now you're putting them back in. Have these properties suffered any negative consequence? Like, have they been unable to do something they want to do? Have they not been utilized to their full capacity? Like, what's the need to bring them back into the BRAC mixed-use?
So BRAC actually gave it several more options when it came to development opportunities.
Okay.
And so it, the key is to, no, I don't think they've suffered anything at this point, because it's still, the land is still there for development.
Okay.
But the intent has always been to develop those areas. You hear, Eritropolis, for example, is some of those developments that have come up over time.
Are we doing that? Is that happening?
It's, it's still out there. I'll say that, it's still out there as a potential development.
Okay.
But this just makes sure, just like we've done with mixed-use areas in the county for the five that we've done, to give them options, this makes sure that the, the BRAC areas still have those, that flexibility to do all the things that they were intending to do when we passed the bill, you know, 10 years ago, whenever it was.
Copy. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the explanation and that these two shaded areas were previously part of the BRAC. My question is actually for the administration, just to confirm, and Mr. Hunt, this was your predecessor, I believe, on the, the bill that we're discussing.
So many.
Do, do you happen to recall, or does anybody from the administration happen to recall? Was it just an oversight when reviewing the legislation that it was missed, that the circle inadvertently removed to parcels part of the BRAC or two areas?
I am not sure. I'm, yeah, all our predecessors were here.
Okay.
I will text my predecessor and ask him right now.
Okay. But, yeah, I think Ms. Miller has me.
Yeah.
I, Ms. Fiedler, I don't know if it was so much an oversight, but at the time, one of these polygons that is subject to this bill already was in the development process, and so to our understanding, they didn't, at the time, we didn't know that they had further need to take advantage of the BRAC mixed-use allowances. And since that, after that time, it came to light that they did. So there was actually a bill done in 2022 that grandfathered any other sites that had formerly been eligible for BRAC mixed-use, as long as they had some type of application, a preliminary plan, a permit, whatever, in by the date of that bill. So portions of that site, but not all of it, ended up being grandfathered, and, and so is in fact still eligible today to use BRAC mixed-use, but not the entire area. So we do agree that the simplest thing to do at this point is just to include both of these polygons that did used to be eligible for BRAC, and then they weren't, and then portions of them were again because they were grandfathered. So just to make it clean and make sure everybody's covered at this point, this is probably the best approach.
That information is actually very helpful, so I appreciate it.
Sure.
Any other comments? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5025, as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5025? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 5025 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5025 as amended.
Bill Number 5025, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning BRAC Mixed-Use Development.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5025 as amended.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hammer.
Nay.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 5025 as amended has passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5425.
Bill Number 5425, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Subdivision of Development, Non-Public Schools.
Miss, bless you. Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed this bill at the previous council meeting. Essentially, it gives the same exemption to Article 17 that in our county public schools and charter schools have. I do have an amendment that I will offer at the appropriate time.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. I think our concerns with the bill remain the same as we expressed at the prior hearing, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. We will not hold a public hearing on this bill this evening as the public hearing was closed on June 16th and the motion to hold the bill, hold the vote on Bill Number 5425 was deferred to tonight. Ms. Fiedler, you say you have an amendment? Or amendments?
Amendment one.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment limits the exemption to the subdivision of development requirements for non-public schools to the renovation or retrofitting for up to 50% of the square footage of an existing building or structure so long as the renovation or retrofit is not intended to increase student enrollment.
Okay. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I still believe that in general, private schools should, are, are now, with recent changes to our code, held to a higher review standard, obviously than public schools and charter schools in the county. But I did hear the concerns of my colleagues in the administration at our last meeting and came up with this compromise amendment that kind of speaks for itself. It would only apply the exemption to existing school, existing structures of a private school, only allow for an increase of up to 50%, and would not be for additional student enrollment. And with that, I move the amendment forward.
Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the sponsor sharing the amendment with us and we had a discussion about it this morning. I think we still have some concerns that this amendment doesn't get us there. I don't know if Jansen wants to add anything. Turn it over to him.
Good evening, everyone. So I had an opportunity to talk to the council member earlier and I shared a lot of the same concerns. And while we appreciate that this amendment tries to narrow the applicability of this, of this particular exemption, we're still concerned overall that exempting private schools in the county from the development review process removes an important component of public or for public oversight. As we all know, public schools already exempt. That exemption serves, exists because public schools, they're subject to extensive state and local oversight and they serve a clear public good. Private schools are not the same. They are private entities and this bill would allow them to bypass the review process designed to ensure safe, compatible, and environmentally sound development. So the larger concern that the administration sees with this legislation is the precedent that it creates. If we begin carving out exemptions for private schools, is this Pandora's Box or we fear it's only a matter of time before similar requests come forward for religious institutions, nonprofits, or other groups arguing that they all still serve a public good or a public function. So that's why, even with respect to this amendment and the applica, and how they're trying to narrow the applicability, the administration would still oppose this bill overall.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that I understand if, if this amendment were to pass and then the bill ultimately to pass, there would still be a requirement for permits. And any permit that is applied, that is a permit for an environmentally sensitive area, they would still be held to the environmental standards of the code in the permit process.
So when we look at exempt, because this ultimately exempts Article 17, and when we look at what is currently not required for the, for public schools, the same but then also be the same for the private schools. And some of the things that are, that are not required for public schools, in addition to APF road facilities, or I know this may not be the, the most attractive sounding topic, but landscaping, we also have, we also have, this is where my, I should have highlighted. We also have, ah, thank you. Of course she highlighted. I didn't highlight, but she highlighted. In addition to landscaping, we also have historic pres, and that's another big one. Their historic pres would not be required if this were, if your legislation were ultimately, ultimately were to pass, as well as steep slopes and buffers. And I know one thing that many public schools, they have to utilize, it would be the parking and stacking design requirement to ensure that, that there's a continuous flow so that we're not having significant impacts on the roadways drawing, school pickup and drop-off. And if the private schools are not required to do that, again, currently, public schools have to comply with COOMAR as well as MSDE and they have that level of oversight. We're concerned that if public schools, who, who's going to guide them? So I think it's been stated on multiple occasions at this point, but I hope that answered your question specifically.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
No, you, you definitely answered the question and I, I heard those points about traffic and drop-off and pickup, which is the impetus behind this amendment because the amendment says that it would be to an existing private school structure and it would not be to increase student capacity. So with those two points, you would not be increasing the, the drop-off numbers or the general traffic. They would have already gone through that process with the construction of the original private school. And they would have had to do the landscape manual because they already have an existing structure, which is the main body, the education hub of the private school. So this is just to allow for up to 50% increase in square footage, which in the case of the, the private school in my district is for a cafeteria and for an area for the student body, body to gather as a whole. That, that is the only type of addition you would get. And I don't know many private schools, public schools, charter schools that build in an existing structure that are right on a steep slope or anywhere near a steep slope. So I don't think, I don't foresee any addition being right on a steep slope or an environmental sensitive area because you're talking about an existing building. That's just my, my thoughts back because I did hear those points and that's the impetus for the amendments.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So obviously exempting an entire article of the code for private development, school or otherwise, is concerning. I have not, I don't feel that I have been given a full understanding of what that means walking this process down the road. I have a private school that is about to undergo pretty significant renovations in my district. We just read in the paper that St. Mary's bought the campus on Best Gate Road. That's going to involve renovations and, and I don't, I don't feel like this council has, this body has been provided enough information to say that we're not doing harm in our communities by lifting this level of oversight for development activity. I also know that we know that this bill is about a specific project and I feel like we've had a lot of offline conversations that that project is moving along where this bill might not even get the project to the end goal that they're looking for, while then opening up Pandora's Box for future projects where we don't fully understand the intended or unintended consequences of that from a community standpoint and a development oversight standpoint. I, I mean, am I missing something? And I definitely don't feel like, having served on the Board of Education, I fully understand the great lengths that public school construction goes through to get to the end, whether it's 30% design, 60% design. It has a lot of public oversight and, and governance from all sides. So I don't think this removing Article 17 adherence to private schools, that doesn't then make parity between construction of private schools and public schools. Public schools go through a lot even just to get to the funding stage before we even begin to construct. So I'm concerned that this bill doesn't, has, is sort of fraught with peril.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. We agree that public schools are not a business, right? Agree on that?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And is it the administration's position, as was just stated, that private schools do not serve a public good? That was the position you said, so I'm just making sure I understood it correctly.
I would say they serve a good. It's not public because they're private schools.
It's private school, got it. Okay, got it. And we agree the critical area law still applies.
It does.
Okay. And we agree that if this amendment passes, let's imagine a hypothetical universe 10 minutes from now where this amendment passes, and in that hypothetical universe, now you can't increase student enrollment with what you're doing. So the concerns the administration is raising is that a private school that's in private business to serve the non-public good is not going to landscape or is not going to make their parking lot user-friendly to the people coming to their business. Those are the concerns that you have.
Not just the, the parking lot, but the traffic flow into the particular site. I know the school that was just mentioned, I believe it was, I think it's Annapolis Christian, that was purchased by St. Mary's. One of their campuses is, was purchased by St. Mary's. The students are all being moved to another campus. So that's not increasing enrollment, significantly increasing the number of students at that location, though.
Okay. And your concern is that the people in private business who are trying to create a product that people want to pay tens of thousands of dollars a year to send their children to are not going to adequately adjust for traffic flowing out of their business. That's your concern?
The concern is that they won't adequate, that, that the impact on public, public utilities, public access, public rights of way will not be taken into account.
Okay.
I'm going to have to respond to that line of questioning that just came up because I, I understand what you were trying to do, Mr. Volkey, to say that it would be silly to think that a private business would not do that. But that is the entire purpose of why we have the code, is because many entities, private, public, or whatever, would maybe do not take those things into account. So we have the code to make sure that it's considered. It's not targeting schools specifically. We have that for everyone because it can have a massive thing. I am, I am, I, I share the concerns of Ms. Pickard on this about removing this wholesale. I am very open to taking a deep dive into what the school system is allowed to do for their schools as opposed to what we have and looking for ways that we could trim it and make it a little, what are some things we could do with parity? But I'm, I am hesitant to open up this broadly without looking that closer. So I will share with the sponsor, whichever way this goes, I would certainly work with you to look for ways to improve it in there, but I'm, I'm, I cannot do it wholesale right off the bat without doing a real close look at what things are required for our public schools and our private, because I'm afraid that we might have some very unintended consequences from this. So are there any other comments, Ms. Pickard?
Well, I, I do want to, I do want to address the issue of timing because I think everyone on this council understands the frustrations that the private sector, the nonprofit sector, the public sector feels about getting through the process. And it can be lengthy. So I know that there's been work on the side of the administration for the specific project to hold some hands and get them through a process so that the students won't be, won't have to endure learning cottages for, for longer than a school year. That may or may not be, that may or may not be a reasonable amount of time for them to get through the project, whether we were fast-tracking it or not. But I hope that the administration will take this into consideration as they review the process. But my, the real reason I put on my light was, we haven't, this council hasn't really discussed in this bill how that we can fully make this an emergency piece of legislation. I find this also concerning that this is a slippery slope. And I, I was told, and I want to confirm, that the Office of Law made a statement that the council gets to decide what is an emergency. So that we could decide that anything is an emergency and that has me a little bit But you can't address this situation with, you know, a public health emergency. It doesn't, it's not, don't even try, please. Come on. Help me out here. There was a global pandemic. I think that was, I think, a legitimate emergency in the public health vein. I don't see how this is an emergency.
I'm, I'm not going to speak for the Office of Law, but I think the way that it's been interpreted historically is if five votes of the council say it's an emergency, it's an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
For the administration, thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, while I'm not necessarily supportive of the bill, I just know how this council has certainly surprised, made surprises over the years and we just don't know what, what happens until we get to the end of the process. Does this, does this amendment tighten the restrictions on when something like this can be applied or does it not? Like, so the bill as it is, without this amendment, is more free to, to allow schools to, to make adjustments and bypass some of the protections we have in place. Does this restrict that, this amendment specifically? Just talking about the amendment.
Yes, the amendment narrows the scope of.
Check.
Of, of the proposed legislation.
Got it. Okay. I was just, I just wanted to make sure we were, I was applying my logic to the amendment and not necessarily to the whole bill as we were going through this process. All right, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Comment to my colleague, yes. The way that this amendment is written, it would be an existing private school that has already gone through Article 17 and 18 to get its original school built. So this would be an addition. And just on the emergency piece of that, I introduced this piece of legislation when the administration also introduced four pieces of emergency legislation due to a sensitive timeline, which I also had here. So, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
All right. So Bill, oh, yes, ma'am.
Amendment Number Two.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought we were just doing the one. Got it. Sorry about that. So, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment requires non-public schools approved by the Maryland State Department of Education to comply with the community meetings provision of Article 17.
All right. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another concern that I heard in the discussion on the original bill was the exemption from community meetings requirement. This adds that back in. Motion to adopt.
Okay. Administration?
The administration would never oppose an amendment that involves more community input and voices to be heard.
Same support.
The amendment.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Over to you and three.
Madam Chair, I would like to not move Amendments Three through Five forward.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. So Bill Number 5425 as amended will be heard again on July 21st, 2020. So Bill Number 5425, as amended, will be heard again on July 21, 2025. But I have a question about that. If this is emergency legislation, do we go ahead and, I think that's incorrect.
You are correct.
So we do go ahead and vote tonight on this, on the amended bill. Sorry about that, I didn't catch that earlier in my script, but as I thought about that, okay. So, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5425. Oh, wait a minute, Ms. Rodvian, you had your light on? I'm sorry.
I guess I would like to hear a little more discussion from my colleagues about this because I'm quite undecided right now. So if there's anything anyone else would like to add to the conversation.
I, Madam Chair, may I address a question?
Yes, you may.
Was there anything specific that you were looking for clarification on? So I will just explain, in this scenario, there's an existing school that has gone through all of what is required in the application process. The exemption would just apply to an addition or retrofit renovation, not intended to increase student enrollment. So in, you know, that would not be additional cars coming to the school on a daily basis. It would be an amenity of some sort for the students and staff.
This might be a question for the sponsor, maybe for the Office of Law. Could, could it be interpreted that the increase in enrollment would be specific, like, to that campus? So that there would not be, or would that need to be sort of clarified? Because I really think, you know, I understand the, you know, concern about, you know, a totally separate situation where something like this might need to be accomplished in the future, where you could actually not increase the enrollment of the school, but you can increase the enrollment on a particular campus. To me, you know, the idea that the enrollment on a particular campus is the one that's critical for looking at all of the aspects of development. And I certainly would feel more comfortable if I knew that the amendment applied specifically to the campus and not to the school as a whole, if that makes sense. I'm looking at a lawyer, but we have multiple.
Yeah, I mean, the lawyers down there want, but I'll just read you the exact language of the amendment. The renovation or retrofitting for up to 50% of the square footage of an existing school building or structure for. So to your point about campus, I don't know that it's quite that specific in the amendment, but it certainly seems to narrow in on a building. I don't know how law or OPZ would interpret that.
Ms. Kenny.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Since we would only be looking at that specific development application, I would interpret it to apply to that site that we're looking at to ensure that enrollment is not increased on that site that's under development.
Okay, so just for the record of this conversation, I am going to accept Offices of Law interpretation of how this amendment would be applied.
Ms. Pickard.
So just for fun here, Article 17 has many, many titles. The one that's most concerning to me is Adequate Public Facilities, Title Five, Subtitle One, Subtitle Two Processing, Adequate Fire Suppression Facilities, Adequate Road Facilities, Adequate School Facilities, Adequate Sewerage Facilities, Adequate Storm Drain Facilities, and then General Development Provisions in Title Six, Landscaping, Forest Conservation, Natural Features, Parking, Stack and Stacking Capacity, Historic. I mean, these are all things that, not just this project that we're talking about, but future private school projects would be exempt from. And whether they were built under Title 17, Article 17, you know, 50 years ago, Article 17 has changed a little bit. So they would be exempt from this entire article. I just don't feel like I can make a fully informed decision about what that means and if that is problematic for future sites, future projects. That's why I'm a no on this bill.
So as you just read, all the things that it would, this bill would exempt private schools from, what is water and sewer. So we may not be increasing the enrollment at a site, but for instance, a school were adding a cafeteria, that very well could be adding additional water and sewer requirements, but they would not have to meet that now under Article 17. And am I correct on that? If they're waived from Article 17, so if any additional water or sewer capacity that's needed, would, that wouldn't be a requirement?
That's how I understand it. Something else, something else that troubles me about, I would say Amendment Number One, which obviously has been adopted, but I want to make sure that this body is, is looking at it, is when it says so long as the renovation or retrofit is not intended to increase student enrollment. Now, you know, if that renovation or that retrofit at the time it's being done, it'll pass muster, so to speak, because it's not specific for the purpose of adding student enrollment but 10 years from now, 20 years from now, if, if the governing body of that institution says, you know what, let's utilize the space differently to address capacity, like, that shit would have already sailed. Additionally, I think Councilmember Pickard had noted earlier that this was about a specific school. And to be clear, this specific school is one that the, that the administration, that the Office of Plan and Zoning and the other land use agencies, we've literally held their hand throughout this entire process, meeting with them from beginning to end. And we are literally almost at the finish line in terms of, they had recently submitted a second site development plan. So I'm not sure, or submittal, so I'm not sure specifically, even if this emergency legislation were to pass, how it helps that particular school at this point in the development review process. But I feel like I've spoken enough for the day on this particular bill, and thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
This is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make you speak more even though you feel like you may have just said enough. You know, with respect to the conversations that have occurred between the administration and the school or the relative, or the relevant departments in the administration with respect to the school, would, you know, kind of buying another two weeks allow for any resolution? Or do you feel like where things are is kind of where they're gonna be?
Again, that
I know I'm asking you to look into it.
No, that, trust me, I know this, this particular project very well. This particular institution, they recently submitted, I mean, yeah, they recently submitted, June 25, I believe, their second submittal for their SDP. And it's something that while the county has legally allowed 45 days, 45 days to review it, they're definitely moving at a rapid clip so that any comments, any approvals would be issued. My point is, that process will be, we believe, will be concluded, or at least there will be responses back to the, to the applicant in a very expeditionist manner. And we also believe that had they complied with what we had advised them from jump, from April, May of 2024, we'd be done, we'd be concluded. So again, I still am unsure as to how this helps that particular project, but here we are.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, just for the record, want to be very clear. Yes, this did start with a school in my district, but the idea for the bill came after this council passed a bill that exempted charter schools. And then looking at what the private school in my district was going through, I thought, huh, well, there's a little bit of a discrepancy between how we look at the process for private schools now. So yes, one school, but I, this applies county-wide, the bill, and I fully understand that. I do want to just clarify the comment about down the road, turning a addition retrofit into classrooms. A school that intends to pursue that has to apply for electrical permits, building permits. Wouldn't that then trigger with IMP, they're adding classrooms, you have to go back and do a site development plan? Because you're only exempt if you're not adding those things?
Yes, I would suggest that they would. And I also want to, in terms of responding to your prior point, when we spoke earlier, you did note that it wasn't just specifically about this school. It started, the genesis was in this particular school. And, and as I noted, I do believe that this is something that, not at the table, but it's something that if we had the appropriate level of conversations, and I know many of our staff, I wouldn't want to cause them any more PTSD by saying, let's do another work group. But I do believe that if we were to have two in-depth meetings, we could probably come to some sort of agreement that would, that would not cause us significant heartburn and I still think would motivate, would go towards, I think, your ultimate goals in this particular bill. So in the event that this emergency legislation, the subsequent legislation does not pass, obviously the administration is willing to continue to engage in that dialogue.
And that's, as I said earlier, that's what I give. This is not solely, and I 100% believe, because you brought this up months ago when we were talking about the charter schools to have that, as to look at this. So if it's not needed as the emergency legislation just for this project, but it's something we want to look back at in a grander, not grander, but in a more comprehensive way, then I wouldn't want to do it as emergency legislation. I'd rather have the group that we could sit down and really look at it carefully and find ways we could streamline. Because while they are not a public good, I do believe that private, non-public schools are a good to the community and that we should find ways to make it streamlined and as less onerous as possible. So, but I would rather not do that in an emergency legislation, but rather in a more comprehensive manner.
Mr. Volkey.
Can I ask why?
Can I ask why what?
Like, why does it matter whether it's emergency or not? The only difference is the effective date.
Well, because I don't, I think we brought up different questions, but we're not sure how these things would impact. I would rather look at what the schools actually have to do when it comes to COMAR and things like that and compare to what we have and see where are the places that we could match up. That this right now, the complete exemption from Article 17 is a lot. And so I think there would be, we could have more detailed discussions about really what could be beneficial and what not.
Okay, but that's a substantive issue. The emergency or non-emergency is a procedural piece, right? That's kind of like, is this bill going to take immediate effect or not? That's emergency versus non-emergency. So, and this bill, just like any normal bill that's a non-emergency bill, came in, sat for 30 days, was out there for public comment, then had its first public comment. And then, I think we held it, if I'm not mistaken, and then we've amended it. So it's been out there in the public for quite a while. So I just, I'm not clear like what the difference is, whether it's emergency or not. It seems to be that's a procedural issue. It seems like the substantive issue is still the problem that we're sort of hung up on is do we want to do this from a substantive standpoint? But from a procedural standpoint, I don't think emergency or non-emergency makes any difference. Am I missing something?
No, I think we're, I think we're just disagreeing on, on what it does, on the substance of it. It's kind of, I'm saying I think there needs to be greater in-depth discussion on this of what it would, what it would do. And, and so I would rather halt and go and have a couple of meetings and look at that and hear from the school system and let's look at some ways to do it. So it's not, it's, you know, I
Yeah, I got you. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So, Ms. Rodvian.
I guess this is, I don't know if there's a question that goes with this, but I'm really torn between the place that I would like this school to be able to accomplish what they need to do. But I don't necessarily want to, you know, create a, you know, create a rather substantial change in the code that would, you know, open up things that we might not be able to foresee right now. And so that's kind of where I'm torn. So that's why I'm really looking like, is there a path to get to where the school, this current school, you know, that, I know this is broader than just the current school, but I know that there is a current school that is trying to meet goals. And is there, you know, do we have a clear path to get them to their goals without this bill? Without, you know, kind of, and, and I guess what I'm hearing from Jansen is yes, or Mr. Evelyn.
What you, yeah, what you're hearing is that this bill will have no impact on this particular school because of where they are in the development review process, if that is, if that is helpful.
And so this doesn't even, you're saying that this doesn't even necessarily help?
This bill does nothing for the school at this point in the development review process. Point blank, period.
And I just want to ask, as the sponsor of the bill, do you, I mean, do you feel like that that's accurate? I mean, do you see that the same way? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to accuse you of, you know, being dishonest, but do you see that the same way with respect to your perspective?
I'm always hopeful, but there's not an approved site development plan right now.
All right, any other? Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, just to follow up on that point. Like, just to put a finer point on this.
Yes.
You're saying that this bill does nothing, but if this bill passes, your review stops? Because this just moves forward, right?
I'm not sure that this bill would go into effect prior to the county. I mean, if the county does not issue their, the approval for the SDP, then sure. But if it does, it does nothing for this particular institution or this particular applicant.
I mean, the bill itself, in Section Two, Bill 5425, says this ordinance hereby declared to be an emergency ordinance necessary for immediate preservation of public health, peace, health, safety, welfare, and being passed by the affirmative vote of five members of the county council. The same shall take effect the day it becomes law. Has it become law? 10 days, right? Yeah. So you're saying that you're going to have this approval within the next 10 days? So if we don't pass it tonight, this is a sure thing? 10 days, you're gonna have it approved?
I, I, I don't know how many other ways I can say this. This, this applicant submitted their second attempt at an SDP in June. We have already, we have already been reviewing that. We know that we typically have a 45-day review window. However, we have been trying to get this behind us. Not because, I want to be very clear, not because any of the land use agencies have been dilatory or, or, or unresponsive in this process. We put this all, sometimes applicants and sometimes the, the work that their consultants utilize is not always. Sometimes it requires multiple attempts or multiple staffs at the table. In this particular case, everyone from the plan and zoning officer to me, to staff, we are all trying to get this behind us. But that's also contingent on the quality of the, of the submittal. And I'm so
You're good, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand your statements, right? Your statement is, this bill doesn't matter because we're gonna get this done in the next 10 days. We're gonna approve what's been submitted and we're gonna do it. Because the only way that logically what you're saying makes sense is this bill doesn't matter if you're giving a confirmation to this body that within the next 10 days, prior to 10 days expiration from today, y'all are gonna approve what you have in front of you.
And, and, and the reason why I can't and the reason why I can't give that is because you said based on if we would approve it. Again, that is, that is based on the quality of the application that was submitted.
Which is exactly why this bill is needed. Because unless this bill is passed, everything continues to sit in your discretion.
But then, but that goes back to the ultimate point of this, of this particular bill. Do we want, do we, do you as a body want to take away the necessary development review that is done to ensure that these, that these applications, these redevelopments and ultimately whatnot are done in a way that is beneficial to the community, to the county and the residents? So
I, I got that part. That's a policy question for the seven of us. But the statement that you made that this bill doesn't matter is an incorrect statement because this bill does matter unless you're saying here publicly on the record that you are approving the submission you have in the next 10 days, which you can't say.
I've told you multiple times, now that I, I won't say that because again, that, that is contingent on the quality of the applicant. So I don't know why if
But then you can't make a statement to say that this bill doesn't matter, because it does. Both things can't be true.
Well, I would love for you all to vote on this to determine whether it matters or not. I feel we spent a lot of time on this.
Mr. Volkey, if I can try to speak to the question you just asked. So you, you were making a point that if this bill passed, then effectively the review can stop now because they'd no longer be subject. But that is only the SDP review. So the applicant still have to get building and grading permits. My understanding as of today is that they do not have final approval on a grading permit. That is primarily related to some errors in their stormwater management submittal that have to be corrected. So with or without this bill, the applicant is still going to have to address those errors and come in with a stormwater management plan that can be approved as part of their grading permit. So I believe that's what Mr. So I believe that's what Mr. Evelyn was trying to speak to, that, you know, they're, they're, passing this bill is not going to guarantee that they're instantly going to get their approvals.
Yes, Paul?
Yes.
So just briefly, understood and appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification. So then that further undercuts something that you all said earlier about how the exemption from Article 17 is going to put us into Pandora's box where there's no site development review of stormwater management, right? Because you all were saying that's not going to happen. That was something that Councilwoman Pickard noted under Article 17, adequate public facilities. But now you're saying that for a grading permit, a building permit, you got to have that. So like, I-
We, we were talking about adequate public facilities with respects to roads. We, we never said, we, we, we never said, uh, water sewer. We said roads.
So you're not saying that. Okay, got it. Because that was said, but I'm making sure you're not saying it then. So you agree that there will still be review for public water and sewer?
Because that's still required for, is still required for the school system.
So, so then this whole thing about, are they going to have enough, you know, use on, capacity on sewage, and are they going to have enough wat-, that was all unnecessary, because they are. They have to have that review anyway. Like, we've just gone down so many different rabbit holes where you all are trying to throw up different objections to this. And ultimately, every one of them, then we're coming back and we're understanding the things you're saying, they're still going to be reviewing.
Councilmember, I never talked about, I never talked about sewer. That's, uh, I'm not sure.
I spoke about it. They did not.
Okay, got it.
Ms. Pickard.
So I think it's clear that, to me, that this, I don't have, still don't have enough information about what this bill, the unintended consequences of passing this bill would have. I think if, if the goal is parity between regulation and oversight of the development process of public schools and private schools, that's a conversation we haven't even had yet. To bring, if you want parity, we can talk about parity. And I don't think your private schools are going to want that kind of parity, to have to comply with COMAR and MSDE and all that as they look at. But we can have that conversation. Um, I think there's a lot of work we need to do in this county about streamlining review proceeds and permitting proceeds. There's a lot of work we need to do, and not just for private schools. I think this is a slippery slope by exempting one kind of entity from an entire article of our code. And I, that is why I am voting no. If we want to talk about timelines and streamlining red tape in the county, that needs to be addressed for all kinds of projects, not just pub-, private schools.
Ms. Rodvian.
I want to go back to, um, Mr. Evelyn, something you had mentioned earlier about how this, you know, this legislative request, this bill, um, came forward in the bigger picture of the process of what the school is trying to accomplish. I'm really focused on, I'm really, that's, that's my biggest focus. And so you said there had been a site development plan submitted back in 2024?
No, I said we first met with, I first had a conversation with someone from the facility, from the school in March of 2024. We had subsequent meetings with their staff, their consultants, along with, um, OPZ and IMP staff, the summer of 2024. And, um, I know, I know they have one of their current consultants here now, um, once they brought, they want to try to get this project back on track. But, um, in terms of, I don't have the date in front of me of when the first submittal, um, oh, yes, the first submittal was, no, that was, it was, that's 25. This, they, they're saying that's February 16th. I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's accurate. I don't believe that's accurate. It says February 16th, 2024. I, I think it would have, it might have been 25, but I don't think that's accurate.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, there's emergencies that truly are unexpected, and there's emergencies that-
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, it was. Now I'm looking at the timeline. It was February 16th, 2024. Um, and that, yeah, that was their preliminary plan submittal. And then their second SDP submittal was January 20th, 2025. And we have a, the timelines here. Yeah, I, I must have, yes, I was wrong when I said it was 2025. It was February 16th, 2024.
Okay.
We've been dealing with them for a while.
And I, I almost don't even feel comfortable asking this, because I certainly don't want to paint, you know, I don't want to paint, um, a particular school in a particular light. But there's emergencies that are truly out of the blue and unexpected, and there's emergencies that come about in different ways, that might have been avoided. And I, I don't know where we're at.
Ms. Pick, um, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just reiterate, uh, my commentary on the emergency from our last meeting. The concern is that this was a carefully timed project so that the students would only be displaced for one school year, uh, because that will create a bit of a traffic situation that the school is working with, with the local community and traffic engineers. Um, if the approval is delayed anymore, we are almost past the point right now, but still have an opportunity to catch up. It will go into a second school year that the students are displaced. And that was never the goal for the school or the surrounding community. So that's why it's emergency, because if you've ever driven in Severna Park on Evergreen Road at school dismissal and arrival time, it is because of Severna Park Elementary, Severna Park High School. Um, I just want to, this isn't really any sort of conflict, but just, uh, I have, um, served as a volunteer at the Severn School, so I have sat in that exact traffic.
All right. Any other comments?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
There are, uh, according to MSDE, 101 private schools in Anarundel County. So-
Really?
Yep. 27 approved private, private pay, seven publicly funded, 33 church-exempt schools, 32 home instruction schools, and two Montessori schools. And I added that up myself.
Correct. Public schools, we have about 128, something like that. So, we're, we're, that's very close to it. So that's a lot of, a lot of possibilities, um, that could be open to all of this. Ms. Pickard?
And, and within those public schools, we have thousands of students that endure more than one year of inconvenience for renovations and construction. Um, we've never been able, Mead High School, North County High School, I mean, it, it, the list goes on and on. The campus of Old Mill right now is going to be a construction site for three years. Can we, can we, can we speed that along? Um, because my community would really love it if we could just snap our fingers and make that construction happen and not have those athletes on other athletic fields. One season should only be enough, right? So this is getting a little much for me. Um, but, um, the council's going to vote how they're going to vote. Can we call the question?
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5425.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
I'm going to vote nay, but I would very much like to see, um, the administrative, administrations departments that are involved with the decisions do everything they can to expedite it. And it sounds like that's already the case. But to, you know, minimize the disruption and, um, you know, help, help the school, um, get to meet their goals.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Bill Number 5425, as amended, has failed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5625.
Bill Number 5625, An Ordnance Concerning Anarundel County Consolidated Plan FY 2026 Through FY 2030.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table are Erin Karpowitz, the CEO of Anarundel Community Development Services, Beth Rush, the Planning Officer for Anarundel Community Development Services, and Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney. Um, this legislation adopts the Anarundel County Consolidated Plan for fiscal year 2026 through 202030, which is a requirement under federal law for federal funding, um, for Anarundel, Anarundel Community Development Services. And I'll turn it over to Erin for, and Beth for some additional comments.
Thanks, Ethan. Um, Erin Karpowitz, Anarundel Community Development Services. Thanks for having us tonight. Uh, this was a, um, massive undertaking that helps fulfill U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, requirements so that we can apply for the federal entitlement funds that come to Anarundel County through ACDS. And we talked a little bit about those during our budget hearing. There are several different entitlement programs, as well as, uh, one competitive program that helps end homelessness in Anarundel County. The HUD Consolidated Plan is a very prescribed plan. It's, if you look into the backend of the database, it's very prescribed in what we have to enter in. So if I were doing a, a comprehensive strategic plan, it wouldn't necessarily look like this. Um, but there is a very robust public engagement process. I'm proud of our team in terms of how they were able to engage the community. We had over 18 listening sessions and focus groups, um, as well as 48, uh, consultations with local stakeholders, including, um, our sister and brother agencies, as well as, um, activist groups, um, uh, various nonprofit organizations. And so we had, um, also in addition to that, three public hearings and got input into, um, you know, what the needs are in, in the community, and, um, you know, how we should utilize those federal funds and how we should expend them in the next five years.
Is there any discussion? I do have a question. Um, this is all based on anticipated funds for FY 26. Um, do we have any word that these funds are going to be released in a timely manner?
Yeah, so I, I, I can't speak exactly to the timing of that, but we do know that in the federal fiscal year 2025 budget, which funds our local fiscal year 26 budget, which this plan is the first year of, um, that we were, um, that HUD entitlement funds were level funded at last year's level. Actually, there was a slight increase over last year because of the way some of the formula worked out, um, because of population increases and so forth. So we do expect to get our full funding for FY 26. Um, we have to pass this first. HUD has to review our plan and accept the plan, and then, um, they will get us our funding agreements sometime, hopefully in August or September. And so, again, you know, I can't, you know, we did have a little blip in, in February where it was uncertain about some of the federal funding, but all accounts have, um, said that they're planning to issue these agreements, get our consolidated plans in, which is basically our application for that funding. So we're, we're hopeful. Um, for FY 20, federal fiscal year 26, it's uncertain. Um, you know, that has to go through the appropriations process, and, um, there have been talks of cuts, but that has to go through the full congressional appropriation process before we know. And that would be the second year of our five-year consolidated plan.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5625. Um, Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5625? Okay. Um, seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 5625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5625.
Bill Number 5625, An Ordnance Concerning Anarundel County Consolidated Plan FY 2026 Through FY 2030.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5625. Oh, I'm sorry. I see lights. I'm sorry. Ms. Pickard?
I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team for all the hard work to get this accomplished. That's all.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Now, please call the roll on Bill Number 5625.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5625 has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5725.
Bill Number 5725, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Anarundel Community Development Services, Inc.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt again for the administration. I have with me Erin Karpowitz, CEO of Anarundel Community Development Services, Norrie Suter, the Affordable Housing Officer for Anarundel Community Development Services, Brian Shank, the Manager of Financial Services for the Office of Finance, and Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney. Um, so, uh, Bill 5725 is essentially approval of a, um, payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for the properties that are owned and operated by Anarundel Community Development Services. Um, so ACDS, as you know, is the county's nonprofit housing and community development agency that administers local, state, and federal grant funds, as well as housing initiatives on behalf of the county. Uh, in this role, they own and operate 98 rental units of rental housing at various locations throughout the county, all of which are rent-restricted and made affordable to rental households with incomes between 50 and 80% of the area median income. And they are always looking for additional opportunities to own and operate in, in the same manner, uh, for the benefit of low and moderate-to-income households. And, uh, state, um, Code Property Tax, Article Section 7503, which is a state pilot law, allows a nonprofit that is engaged in construction or operation of housing for low-income individuals to enter into pilot agreements with the political subdivision in which it operates. And so that is what this legislation does. I won't read through the entire legislative summary. It's a couple pages, but I'm happy to turn it over to Erin, if she has any additional comments she'd like to make.
Thank you, Ethan. Um, so one, just one thing I'd like to underscore, um, the income restrictions on these units go up to 80%. But because of, um, some of the funding that we've been able to put into this, we are offering these units at very low, low rents. Most of them are being offered at rents that are affordable to households earning 50% of area median income. And if you actually read through the consolidated plan, you know that that's where our deepest need is. It's not necessarily people at 80%. It's, it's the lower. So, um, by allowing for, uh, a pilot in lieu of taxes, or basically a reduction in our operating costs, similar to what the Housing Commission of Anarundel County is afforded, you're allowing us to continue to offer these units at low prices while our maintenance continues to go up. A lot of these properties were acquired and rehabilitated in some of our older neighborhood revitalization areas. And if you've seen them, the outside, they look amazing. Um, and, and we want to be able to continue to provide really quality property management, quality upkeep, quality homes at affordable prices for our workforce. And this will help us continue to do so.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5725. Um, Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5725? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 5725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5725.
Bill Number 5725, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Anarundel Community Development Services, Inc.
Okay. There is one technical amendment. Um, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this technical amendment corrects inaccurate code, county code citations.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's exactly what this does. Corrects the citation.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt Amendment Number One.
Okay. Um, Administration, do you support this amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments? Ms. Pickard?
Oh.
Okay. Um, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Okay. Because the amendment was technical, we can vote on the bill tonight. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5725, as amended.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 5725, as amended, has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5825.
Bill Number 5825, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Home Occupations.
Okay. Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this came from actually several constituents in the grooming, pet grooming business. The way that our current code is written, you can do hair styling for humans, you can have a pet care business, but you can't style pet hair in your home. So it was a little bit of a, a gap in the code. This would allow for, um, pet grooming as a home occupation. There is some limitation on the number- The way that our current code is written, you can do hair styling for humans, you can have a pet care business, but you can't style pet hair in your home. So it was a little bit of a gap in the code. This would allow for pet grooming as a home occupation. There is some limitation on the number of animals that I actually pulled from another jurisdiction that allows for this in a home occupation. And I appreciate staff working to gather the language in other jurisdictions and how they handle this section of their code. So ask for my colleagues' support at the appropriate time.
Okay, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We support this bill. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, is there any discussion? Okay, we will now, does this, is this just dog grooming, or would this include pigs?
It could include some cats.
It could, they could, you know, shampoo, a little salon, a little spa day. Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number 5825. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one piece, which had been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website, and Mr. Volkey also has his light on.
Oh, yes, Mr. Volkey.
Are we done with public testimony part?
No.
I want to jump your script.
Yeah, don't mess up my script. Okay, because I lose place and then I don't know where I am. Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill number 5825? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill number 5825 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 5825.
Bill number 5825, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Home Occupations.
All right, any further discussion, Mr. Volkey?
Brief question, has someone been cited for grooming an animal in an area that's not allowed to be grooming?
No, but someone did their homework prior to starting a business and realized that the code didn't allow and did not want to get caught up in any kind of trouble.
All right.
We applaud following the rules, so change the rules when necessary, so. All right, any other questions? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 5825.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 5825 has passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1625.
Resolution Number 1625, Resolution Approving the Determination as Surplus in the Terms of a Private Disposition of Certain County-Owned Property in Glen Burnie, Maryland, Known as 7409 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard.
All right, I think we have a full panel up here now for this. Mr. Hunt? It's not the resolution. All right.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just give us a sec, I think we're all set to go. So, thank you. Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration, with me at the table, I have Janzen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Greg Swain, our County Attorney, Amy Gowen, our CEO and President of Anarundel County Economic Development Corporation, Patrick Hughes, our Senior Planner from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Elliot Powell, representing Sawmill Partners. And I will turn it over to the panel for the slideshow and discussion.
Me again. Did you miss me? Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Oh, it's wrong, computer. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We're here to share a vision that's been years in the making, a vision for how we take an underutilized county-owned site at 7409 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard and transform it into something that is vibrant, connected, and walkable, something that truly serves the Glen Burnie community and Anarundel County as a whole. From day one, our approach was rooted in the values that define this administration and the goals and guiding principles of Plan 2040. That plan calls on us to grow smarter by focusing new investment in existing communities, expanding housing opportunities near transit, and creating walkable mixed-use places that reduce our environmental footprint, equitable access to housing, and community-driven planning. That's why we issued a request for proposals with a clear set of priorities. Develop a mixed-use, transit-oriented community that reflects the needs of the people who live and work here. We were intentional about where this project sits, just steps from the Cromwell Station along the BNA Trail and adjacent neighborhoods that deserve renewed investment. The selection process was thorough and collaborative. I want to thank our review committee, an incredible group of professionals across planning, finance, housing, and development for their careful analysis and shared commitment to getting this right. After months of review, we selected Sawmill Partners LLC to partner with. We're calling it The Villages at Sawmill Creek, and it's a powerful example of how we can bring Plan 2040 to life by making strategic use of county-owned land to create complete communities that are inclusive and resilient. The proposal includes 246 residential units thoroughly distributed across 124 sale multifamily condos, 92-over-two for sale condos, 36 rental townhomes. This is housing that's designed to serve a range of incomes and household types, and I'm proud to say it exceeds the county's requirements for MPDU. I should have just said it out instead of trying to do the acronym. Moderately-priced dwelling units, it makes it a little easier to say the S at the end. Furthering our commitment to affordability and inclusivity. But housing is only part of the story. This project includes environmental remediation of a long-neglected site, enhanced stormwater management, and the dedication of surrounding wetlands and habitat area to the county for long-term protection. And from a transportation perspective, this project extends the existing road, bike, and sidewalk network, improving connections to Cromwell Station, Glen Burnie Town Center, and the BNA Trail, precisely the kind of infrastructure integration that Plan 2040 envisions. Oh, you're there, all right. The Villages at Sawmill Creek reflect everything we're trying to achieve with land use in this county in this moment. Connected, inclusive, environmentally responsive, responsible communities that meet the moment. Compact infill development near transit, mixed-use neighborhoods that support walkability and access to opportunity, expanded housing choices that are multiple price points, sustainable design that protects our environment and invest in our infrastructure. This project supports mobility on foot, on bikes, and via transit, and delivers new housing opportunities that working families can actually afford. It's been designed with sensitivity to its surroundings, with building scale and open space that respect the character of adjacent neighborhoods. And just as importantly, we all see this project as a catalyst for economic revitalization. But for that, I'll turn to Amy Gowen. But before I do, just to clear, County Executive Pittman noted that this is exactly the kind of development that we need more of. It aligns not only with our administration's values, but with the strategic vision laid out in Plan 2040. Thank you.
Okay. Am I okay? Okay, thanks, Mr. Evelyn. Amy Gowen, President and CEO for Anarundel Economic Development Corporation, and, thank you, and as many of you know, we headed up the RFP process and managed it on behalf of the county, and so we're really excited to be at the table today presenting this. So just to talk a little bit about the multiple economic benefits that this project provides. It builds on the momentum of our current investments. As many of you know, we've received a number of DHCD funds over the last couple of years, so we've been doing placemaking activities, wayfinding, public art, and a number of other investments within the Glen Burnie Town Center. And this ties into those investments, linking the Cromwell Light Rail Station with the Town Center. It also helps us to attract future investment and drive demand for goods and services, and bring the foot traffic to the businesses within the local community that need their support, our local restaurants, our small businesses, and our retail establishments. Finally, as Mr. Evelyn mentioned, locating housing near transit obviously helps connect workers with jobs. And in this particular instance, this mix of housing types, one of the things that we were very particular about in the selection process was housing that serves the local community. And so these housing typologies, they appeal to different buyer preferences and can accommodate households ranging from singles to growing families. And that was it, as I said, that was a big qualifier for us. And it also provides that entry-level homeownership opportunities to help households build wealth and upward mobility. In terms of environmental remediation, okay, we know there's contaminated sources in the soils, given the longstanding history of this as industrial uses and underground storage tanks. The property is currently subject to an oil control program with MDE where it's being monitored, and the county currently has a corrective action plan that they're developing in conjunction with MDE. So the developer is going to be taking on significant risk in assuming ownership of this site. As the full scope and the remediation efforts, it remains to be determined, we still need to do a number of confirmatory sampling and analysis to really understand the full scope. So at this point, this is the county's liability, then that risk and liability will shift over to the development team once this property is sold. Ultimately, cleanup will be overseen, will be governed by MDE's voluntary cleanup program. And then AAEDC did receive a grant to help offset a portion of the remediation, testing, and demolition costs. We got $300,000 from DHCD, although we do expect that will be a nominal amount in the scope of the entire remediation effort. In addition to the cleanup of this current brownfield site, this slide kind of speaks to the additional environmental benefits. A portion of the site, basically the 22 acres that are in the northern portion of the site, they'll be subdivided off and they will remain with the county. That's currently pretty healthy floodplain, and so that will preserve those acres. It has, they are, they have wetlands, creeks, environmentally sensitive lands that will be preserved and protected through this project, and that can extend into the Patapsco tidal watershed, which is a priority watershed for restoration. And the other piece to note is that the development is all going to be within the existing developed area of the site. So that area has no stormwater management today. Not only is it contaminated, but it's all impervious, it's all already developed, and so the redevelopment will be limited to that footprint. Next slide. Mr. Evelyn talked about the pedestrian and the other connectivity through the site. So the project provides missing pedestrian links between the Cromwell Light Rail Station and the Town Center, and then to the BNA Trail. And so the missing links help connect the project to the existing community, and we also integrate the road network into the existing community. So Linden Lane gets extended into the project to the north and the east, and that extension then ties this project in with the entire community, and it allows for access to downtown Glen Burnie, Interstate 97, and Route 2. So it's not going to stand alone as a single development. In terms of transportation improvements, through the RSP process, the county requested and the developer agreed to provide additional enhancements over and above what would be typically required. So we were able to negotiate and secure these through the land development disposition process, and then Mr. Swain will talk a little bit more about these, they are in the terms and conditions. But essentially, the county will get an accessible path to BNA Trail via Linden Lane, including improved crossings across BNA. We'll also get sidewalk improvements along BNA from Linden to Dorsey, so this connects this project up to the Cromwell Shopping Plaza, and then a pedestrian crossing across BNA at Dorsey connecting to the Light Rail Station. And finally, contributions towards a county's current CIP project to connect the BNA Trail with the Light Rail Station. So, but for this project, we would not be able to, these are, these enhancements are direct benefit of the project and allows us to expedite our current CIP project. And before I turn it over to Elliot, I just wanted to mention that this truly is an innovative project for Anarundel County. I know there are other counties that have done redevelopment like this, but this is really kind of a first of its kind in Anarundel. So we're really excited to be able to present this, and we hope this can be a model for future areas in need of redevelopment within the county. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elliot Powell, our development partner at Sawmill Partners, and to talk a little bit about the context-sensitive design of the project.
Thank you, Amy. I am Elliot Powell, and I am very happy to be here. It's a long road to get here, and because I'm a developer, I'm going to go a little off-script. It makes everybody a little bit nervous. No, but seriously, we're very happy with this project. We are thrilled. You know, the site itself offers many opportunities, just the proximity to the BNA Trail, to the Cromwell Station, to the BNA Trail access and the trail system back to downtown Glen Burnie. We just think it's going to inspire revitalization around us. We have come up with a concept of housing types that are sensitive to our neighbors. A rendering is right here that you can see. We have chosen a scale that is commensurate with our neighbors as well. We have interconnecting trail system within the community, we have a tot lot, of course, we have a planned community garden. So we have a lot of things that make it very human, very easy to get around, and also it's connected with our neighbors as well. This isn't a community that we're creating to be isolated, it's creating to be connected with our neighbors around us, and we're very happy with that, okay? These slides give you a sense of the type of quality of construction that we intend, and these will be the builders that we select, we'll hold them to these standards. Next. Another view, this is a view from within the community itself, where Linden and Georgia come together, unless you've been there, some know it quite well. Instead, again, of isolating our plan from the neighbors, we're opening it up, we have gathering areas right at the confluence of Linden and Georgia, so we'll place this for the community members, neighbors, as well as ourselves to be. We did have an open house. The open house was very successful. We had a lot of questions and some concerns, of course, which is quite natural, change is very difficult. We talked with some of the specific neighbors about, through traffic, they have some concerns about people using a shortcut through their community. And we promised, and we'll do so, to continue to meet with the community, we have a community meeting requirement under the concept plan requirement, and just being good neighbors, but being sensitive to some of the challenges that they face today. And I would say, all in all, by the time we're two-hour, three-hour session of the open houses over, there were a lot of people who came away having a much better, clearer understanding about what was being proposed and felt quite happy with it. And that's it.
Good evening, council. I'm Greg Swain, I'm your county attorney. I'm here to talk about the terms and conditions of the disposition of the property. So since roughly January until beginning of June, we met with the developer and their legal team pretty much twice a week to work out all the terms and conditions of the sale. And in doing this, we are trying to implement Bill 6021, which is a bill you all passed in 2021 to adopt Section 18105 of the county code, which provides that the county should maximize opportunities for public-private partnerships, and that's exactly what this is. So the, I'll talk first about the consideration for the sale, because there's both monetary consideration and non-monetary consideration. So what I mean by that is there's $1 million in cash that the developer is paying upfront. The additional value items include, something I think we've already mentioned, is moderately-priced dwelling units above the requirements of Bill 70- dwelling units above the requirements of Bill 7224, which went into effect on July 1. So they're providing 19 additional moderately-priced dwelling units that they're not required to provide, but are providing, and there's value in that, because they have to sell them for less, obviously. We've heard a little bit about the environmental remediation of the site, that's a big item. This site was in industrial use since the 1940s. So there are known contaminants on the site, there are monitoring wells in place. Although Sawmill Creek is in pretty good shape, obviously, that does not contribute to the health of that floodplain. All of that is going to be studied by the developer, and they're going to remove soil, they're going to do the things that MDE requires them to do. We know that's a million-dollar item, so it's a big deal. They are also going to demolish and remove all the structures on the property. So this is not a parking lot, and this is not raw land, this is pretty heavily developed property. There's considerable cost in doing that, and there's also environmental issues involved in that, because these are old buildings, and there are things like asbestos and other materials that need to be carefully removed. We've heard about the off-site connectivity, which, again, these are above and beyond county requirements. Those are significant investments on behalf of the developer as well. And I think Amy mentioned that the developer is undertaking, you know, we are surplusing this entire site, which is 35 acres. The developer is undertaking the survey necessary to separate the floodplain from the developable area, which is something normally the county would have to do. So the developer is undertaking that. Now, those items being said, in my view, the most significant consideration that this deal offers the county is our control over the end product. So this went through a request for proposal, a number of proposals from different developers were submitted, and this one was selected. And because this is what was selected, and that's not just, you know, sort of this general concept, but it's where these buildings are going to be located, and by that I mean the four-story buildings, which are multifamily, are going to be located far away from the existing residential along the edge of the floodplain. All the other units are, so we have control over that. We know when we adopted this plan that we have a good idea of what this site is going to look like, how it's going to be oriented, what the number of units is going to be. We basically control that, and we control that by a number of contractual terms. The county retains approval rights over the entire subdivision process, basically, and not just from a county regulatory standpoint, but from a county review standpoint. So we are able to weigh in on a preliminary concept plan, which is not the official concept plan, but a preliminary plan, so we know this project is on the right track. And only when the county approves that preliminary plan can the developer move to the formal concept plan that's required in the Glenbernie overlay. We have a number of off-ramps that we built into the contract for the county. We have a right to terminate the contract for convenience up to the time that they submit their formal concept plan. We have a limited reversionary right, which is, basically means the land would go back to the county if the developer does not keep its promises to develop this in the way we want and according to a set timeframe of 36 months. And that means 36 months from the date they begin the formal process to the date we have a recorded subdivision plat. We also have completion guarantees of the plat recordation and completion guarantees of the environmental remediation from the developer built into the contract. So a lot of time and effort's been put onto this. This is proceeding under the surplus process that you all approved about a year and a half ago, maybe two years. But the purpose of this hearing is to approve both the declaration of the property as surplus and then also the conditions of the disposition of the property. So that's what we're asking for tonight. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, but I want to echo what both Amy and Greg had stated. This was a very time-intensive labor of love. This is also something that, while it's new for Anarundel County, other jurisdictions have already started redeveloping. Or, so while this is our first large redevelopment project, this will not be our last. This is a way that, one, we, from an environmental perspective, we have an opportunity to do less green fill, but we also get to do cool things in existing communities that are in need of a refresh. And so whether we want to call it revitalization or redevelopment, this is the future. And while this was the first time for us doing it, we're excited because it created a blueprint of how it's going to be going forward. And the staff that are all present at the table, as well as Mr. Daniels, we also had Ms. Wilson from Office of Plan and Zoning. There were, I mean, we would meet two to three times a week, and ultimately, after four, five-month period, we came up with the terms that Mr. Swain just went over. So at this point, we'd welcome any questions, any comments. I know, I'm surprised Councilmember Picker doesn't have her light on yet, but thank you very much.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this will be a fairly straightforward question, but I understand what a request for proposal is, but would someone be willing to just go into a little bit more detail for the general public to understand? I know that's a competitive and open bidding process, but if you could just describe that a little bit more so folks understand how that came together? Thank you.
Thank you. So basically, a request for proposals is, we, AAEDC, worked with the county to release a, kind of like a call for proposals, highlighting our goals and our objectives for redevelopment of this site. So calling for a transit-oriented development with a mix of housing typologies, with greater affordable housing, and all of the other elements that we wanted to see. And from that, different development teams had the opportunity to submit proposals. We had a selection committee that consisted of county staff and led by economic development. We also had MEDCO, the Maryland Economic Development Corporation, that came in as a consultant to help us. And we had some private sector developers on the committee, and that was really essential, I think, and something that I would, you know, I think could be replicated in understanding the financial feasibility, the development of feasibility of the different proposals that came in. And so from that, we, you know, we went through a competitive ranking process, conducted interviews and so forth, and then that team developed a recommendation that was submitted to the county executive.
So that sounds pretty competitive and open to me.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Swain, I appreciate the explanation on the terms. Based on that information, knowing that the county does have some leverage and control, do we foresee the plans or what will be submitted changing much from the beautiful pictures in the presentation?
Well, I would say no. No, because... Throughout this, sorry. Throughout this process, or very early on in the process, we brought the planning and zoning folks in. So to be able to sort of oversee what was being proposed and flag any potential pitfalls. In addition, Sawmill Partners is a combination of four different local developers who are very familiar with our development process. So we fully expect that what you are seeing is pretty much what we're going to be getting. There can be some variety in the number of dwelling units based on site conditions, et cetera, so that we have built a little bit of wiggle room into the contract to take into account that reality. But we also have control. If it starts, and we don't expect this to happen by any stretch of the imagination, but if things start going in a different direction, we certainly have a way out of this contract. So we feel we really have given the county a great deal of control in going forward by these contract terms, and again, think this can be a very successful public-private partnership.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Picker.
Well, I realize it's getting late into the evening, but I'm going to have to take some personal privilege to talk a little bit about this project. And first, I'm going to start with my thank yous to not only the folks at the table, but all the behind-the-scenes folks that have been involved in getting us to this point. Because for me, as the councilmember that represents this district, this started back in 2019. So we're looking at six years of work and our second RFP process to get us to this successful contract that's been negotiated before us tonight. I think from what we've already seen of the current conditions of this project, it's clear that this area has been under-invested in, and also the county for 60 years has been involved in maybe not treating this part of that watershed in Sawmill Creek as we would like to see today. So there's a lot of hard work. I have a timeline that has about 41 points on it for the last six years that I've been involved in, which includes a lot of public engagement with the Glenbernie Revitalization Implementation Task Force. We have toured a couple economic development directors, a couple CAOs. I mean, people have come and gone since we started this process, but also community members, folks from our federal, state, and local delegation have been involved over the last six years. I am incredibly pleased with the outcome, and the proposal put forth, I feel like Sawmill Partners has honored the character of the community extremely well, even compared to, certainly compared to some of the other proposals from the first RFP process, and I feel like that's really important as we look at the evolution of that Glenbernie BNA corridor. Honoring the neighborhoods that surround this area is actually Zoned R5. You wouldn't know it by what's there currently, but this is an exciting opportunity, not just for this parcel, but for opportunities to replicate the process and be successful in public-private partnerships and redevelopment in other parts of the county as well. So I urge the support of my colleagues. I'm going to work really hard not to get emotional as we vote on this, but this is six years of your District 2 team, because I have to always acknowledge my legislative staff. Kristin, we've been working hard on this for a long time, but I am really proud of the work that the folks at the table have done to get it to here, to us tonight. So thank you from the bottom of my heart and from the community at large. There's going to, this is a change for the community, and so I will put out, I know, I feel really good about the folks that have come forward to pull this project together, and I feel like they will respect and collaborate with the surrounding community as the project gets underway. So I want to thank y'all for that in advance. I urge everybody's support of this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you all for your hard work on this. Quick question, on the timeline, you mentioned 36 months, and as the councilwoman mentioned, six years worth of effort getting here, the design pretty much staying intact. Is there any reason that 36 months can't be reduced?
Well, I think what we tried to do was give them a wide enough window. I mean, we believe realistically, this project could be approved in 24 months. And we think, because we have a local team who is well-experienced in going through the county process, and it is in the Glenbernie overlay, which means the process, you can skip sketch plan because they have a concept plan, so there is a way to get it moved along. We're hopeful that the 36 months is a way outside window. But we did, there was a lot of discussion on this point, and we did not, and the developer made it clear, you never know. So it is a hard stop. We felt, I think early on, we probably were pushing for 24, but I think we said 36, and that's based on a lot of different factors. So hopefully it won't take that long.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I just really wanted to echo, I know this is Ms. Picker's district, and she obviously has more to say about it and everything, but I was just blown away with the presentation when you guys kind of gave me a little preview last week. I just think this is an incredible project. I can hardly fathom the amount of work that has gone into it, and so never to be one to, you know, miss an opportunity to heap praise on people for lots and lots of good work over long, extended periods of time. I just wanted to give you guys a shout-out. This is amazing. This is amazing. So I'm so excited that this is coming to Anarundel County, and I can only just say, I wish it was in District 6, but I'm happy for District 2. And yeah, all in.
So, no, I love this redevelopment. I have a question for the environmental cleanup, which sounds like it could be extensive. Do we, is there a timeline for how long y'all think that's going to take, or is that going to be, we got to get started and see what we find?
Yeah, I think some of that is, well, much of it is subject to MDE and how quickly they move on their end. And I think, kind of getting to Councilmember Smith's comment or question is, you know, that outlying end date part and parcel, I think, is because of the uncertainty with the environmental, but we are in conversations with them currently, but it is hard to put a timeline on that. I don't know if you want to elaborate at all, but...
The only thing I would add is, we've reached the point where the problem is understood, which is important, because in many cases, we don't really know what we're getting into. We have a very good sense, the site's been monitored by MDE and by private consultants hired by the county, so we have a leg up in that respect. And I think that will help from a timing standpoint, getting to the coalining, getting the work physically done. The remediation work is tough, dirty work, excavating out contaminated soils from Mother Earth, so.
Ms. Picker.
Okay, this is my last comment, but I did want to make sure that I take us all the way back to our very first term in 2019. I can't pinpoint exactly, but I believe sometime in the fall of 2019, I had pestered and advocated enough that the county executive, Mr. Stuart Pittman, the current senior policy director at the time, Mr. Chris Trumbauer, and the CAO got on board and saw the vision that I was pushing for. And I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged those individual people that aren't in the room and maybe haven't been in the weeds on this for the last year or so, but this is a good thing, and we're going to make some great spaces, as Secretary Jake Day likes to say. So I wanted to make sure I gave my thank you and gratitude to all involved.
Okay. All right, well, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 1625. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 1625? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 1625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1625.
Resolution Number 1625, Resolution Approving the Determination of Surplus in the Terms of a Private Disposition of Certain County-Owned Property in Glenbernie, Maryland, Known as 7409 Baltimore-Annapolis Boulevard.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1625.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Picker.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1625 has been adopted.
There we go. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution Number 2025.
Resolution Number 2025, Resolution Continuing the Service of Brenda Cottrelli as Acting County Auditor, Whereas Pursuant to Section 310 of the Charter of the County Council, Appointed Brenda I. Cottrelli as Acting County Auditor effective March 13, 2025 through July 11, 2025. And whereas the County Council desires that Brenda I. Cottrelli continue to serve in this acting capacity for the earlier of six months or until the appointment of a county auditor by the council, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Anarundel County, Maryland, that the service of Brenda I. Cottrelli, CPA, CRM, ACI, CFE, as Acting County Auditor, is hereby extended until the earlier of January 11, 2026, or the appointment of a county auditor.
All right. Any comments from any councilmembers? All right, any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2025.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Picker.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2025 has been adopted.
Okay, so is there any other business, any councilmember would like to bring before the county council at this time?
Madam Chair, if I may, can I be added as a co-sponsor to the Resolution 1625?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. for our council work session here in our chamber.
That needs to be corrected. That's 9:00 a.m. My apologies for the script.
I'm sorry. We'll, on Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. So, there we go.